Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 25th meeting of Missoula City Council. I'll call the meeting to order at 6:03 PM. And before we get started with the agenda, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Thank you. And Ms. Trimble, can we do a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Good evening. Um, beginning with Anderson. I don't see her online.
Yes, Ms. Anderson was caught in travel, unfortunately. We, she may be missing from the meeting tonight, but I'll watch for her in case she is able to join us.
Thank you. Basara.
Present.
Campbell. Absent. Carlino.
Present.
Farmer.
Present.
Jones.
Present.
Jordan.
Present.
Nelson.
Present.
Nugent.
Present.
Savage.
Present.
Cheryl.
Present.
And Vaseka.
Present.
And we do have a form.
All right. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the approval of minutes from August 18, 2025. Any changes or questions to those minutes? Okay. Not seeing any, then those minutes will remain as submitted. Thank you. Um, next we have our committee schedule for this coming Wednesday, August 27th. Ms. Trimble, any changes to that committee schedule that is posted online?
No changes, another short day.
Great. Thank you very much. Looks like committees start at 12:00 PM. Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we move on to our special presentations and proclamations. And we do not have any Neighborhood Council updates tonight, but we do have two proclamations to share. And the first is Service Dog Month. So I'll go ahead and read that now. And Claire will share that on the screen for folks to be able to follow along. All right. Whereas Missoula, Montana is a welcoming and inclusive community. And whereas Missoula, Montana recognizes the important work and tasks that service dogs provide to their partners with disabilities, assisting them to achieve the greatest independence possible. And whereas with the passage of the Americans with Disabilities Act, or ADA, our nation fully recognized and protected service dogs under law. And whereas the city of Missoula continues to celebrate the spirit of the ADA today and throughout the year by honoring the service dogs that work in our community. Now, therefore, I, Andrea Davis, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the state of Montana, hereby recognize the month of September 2025 as Service Dog Month. And we do have a guest or two guests here this evening that wish to say a few words. And so Kristin, whenever you're ready, Ms. Newman, come on up. We have Ms. Newman and Ms. Poppy here to join us this evening.
I want to thank Mayor Davis and the entire city council for recognizing how service animals can provide individuals like me equal opportunity to participate in our community. Poppy has grown up attending council meetings as part of her training. This council has been beyond welcoming and supportive as well as our community at large, as Poppy has been learning to work in a variety of settings. I really feel it's because our, because of your support and encouragement that I've felt less nervous and more confident training Poppy out in public settings on my own. I've traveled all over the country with a service dog, and Missoula is top of my list for not having to worry about discrimination, interference, or denial of access. Missoula is one of the most respectful, understanding, and inclusive communities that I have experienced as a service animal handler. And this is one of the major reasons why I chose to move to Missoula. Poppy will be my third service dog, and she is gearing up to begin intensive training in the next couple of months. The spirit of ADA lives within all of us who need access as part of our daily existence. And when I think of what that means, it means taking the intention of the ADA and going beyond what the law requires and aim to thrive in the essence of access and inclusion. While the ADA does not recognize Poppy right now because she is not fully trained, the state of Montana, in the spirit of the ADA, allows her access where fully trained service animals are allowed to go. And this has made it easier for us to grow, learn, and train together. Thank you, Mayor, and for this proclamation and to the city of Missoula for being such a safe and inclusive home for me and Poppy and for soon to be my retired service dog.
Oh, Ms. Newman, thank you very much. And that was really wonderful. I learned quite a bit right now from you. I didn't realize that that Montana was forward-thinking in that sense. So that's really good to know in here. And just very much appreciate you not only being taking part in our council meetings, but also elevating not only the awareness, but the appreciation and support for folks living with various disabilities in our community and and taking part in local government. It's great to have you here always, and Poppy as well, of course. Thank you. Absolutely. You bet. Anybody here that also wanted to share about this particular proclamation this evening? I know sometimes there's several community members that like to be able to speak in regards to those. Okay. All right. Well, thanks for coming down. Uh, we do have another proclamation this evening. And this is in regards to International Overdose Awareness Day. Whereas International Overdose Awareness Day, observed annually on August 31st, honors the lives lost to overdose and aims to reduce the stigma surrounding substance use. And whereas drug overdoses have claimed the lives of more than 185 Missoula County residents since 2014, deeply affecting families, friends, and the entire community. And whereas those impacted by overdose are our loved ones, each one deserving of dignity, compassion, and support. And whereas proven harm reduction strategies such as the lock zone access, fentanyl test strips, and recovery services are essential to saving lives and preventing future loss. And whereas Missoula stands united in grief, resilience, and commitment to preventing overdose through education, connection, and community-driven action. Now, therefore, I, Andrea Davis, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the state of Montana, hereby recognize the 31st day of August, 2025, as International Overdose Awareness Day. And our colleague Leah Fitch Brody, that works for Missoula Public Health, has been the one that requested this proclamation be read. And I do not believe that Leah is here, but I just wanted to make sure, just in case. Okay. We're very grateful for the program at Missoula Public Health for substance, the substance use prevention program in our public health department there. Okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that. So that wraps up our special presentations and proclamations. For our meeting this evening, just to give people a forward look here, we do have three public hearings. And then in addition to our consent agenda, which is a normal piece of business, we do have a couple of items in our regular business under council business, one being a leftover from the budget process, and that's the remaining downtown business improvement district. Now that we have those numbers, that's something that that is resolutions, levying assessments, council can make that vote. And then the second being the Phillips Street School Speed Zone. Um, and that was something that was discussed in committee. It didn't, um, sounds like you ran out of time to make a recommended motion, however, still advanced this to the floor. And so that we'll, we'll be looking to a vote for, vote for that tonight. So with that, we'll go ahead and we'll get started with our public hearings. And, um, the first being a resolution to levy assessments for sidewalk, curb, and gutter improvements. We have Lee Griffin available, but also, um, Claire Trimble is prepared to carry forward with the introduction of this item.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Claire Trimble, City Clerk. This evening, we're going to be talking together about 5.1 and 5.2, which are a resolution to levy assessments for sidewalk, curb, and gutter improvements, and also a resolution authorizing an interfund loan issuance in order to uh, finance those as we, as they are financed over time, as we allow the assessments to be repaid over a period of decades. So, um, to recap, the way we are doing this levy assessment is that these are pieces and parcels throughout the city. There is a map attached to this item that had various curb and gutter sidewalk improvements done as we did projects throughout the city. And these are all completed parcels, and these are all, uh, there's a remainder or a part, a portion, excuse me, of the, um, amount is owed by the homeowner for the improvements that were done to their property. So we gathered up these, uh, I believe, 43 different parcels. And we sent out letters to everyone to notify them that their assessment amount. My office did not receive any protests or of any kind prior to this public hearing, but we also let them know that this is a public hearing where they can come and speak. So we're looking forward to that portion. And I'm happy to answer any questions about this, if anyone has any.
Excellent. Uh, thank you, Ms. Trimble. And I'm just noting, this is, there was a request for a map that was included in the documents as part of the agenda item. All right. So we have had staff presentation on that. Do we have any questions from council? I'm sorry? A comment here in a second? Absolutely. You bet. We'll go through questions and we'll hear the motion first. All right. So any questions from council before we hear the main motion from Counselor Basara? On this, is this, who is this? Yeah. Curb and gutter, Public Works.
So I thought this came through, um, Business and Finance, but I'm happy to read it regardless.
Oh, thank you. That makes sense that it would have come through Budget and Finance.
That would be... Sorry.
And Counselor Cheryl has her hand raised.
Oh, yeah.
All right. All right. Sorry, my mistake there. Counsel, Counselor Cheryl.
Yeah, I'm happy to read the motion, or Miriam could just go ahead and read both of them since she's in the room.
I'm happy to.
Sounds good. We'll do that.
Right. I move that we approve a resolution to create a special district and levy tax assessments for repayment of completed curb, gutter, and gutter improvements for the Warden Turner Right Away Improvements Project, Ivy Franklin Phase One Right Away Improvement Projects, and miscellaneous assessment parcels, curb and sidewalk improvements, for Solution 8839 for parcels found within that district.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Basara. Motion is on the floor. This opens the public hearing. So we'll now open it up to public comment on this agenda item. If there are any members of the public here wishing to speak to this item, please come on up. I'm not seeing any in the room. How about online? I'm not seeing any additional public comment. Looks like we're all right there. All right. Not seeing any public comment on this agenda item, then we'll bring it back to council for comments. Counselor Jordan.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank staff for putting the map together. It's super helpful as a visual learner. So thank you.
Well, I appreciate that very much. Thank you, Counselor Jordan. I agree. It's always, I'm a visual learner too. Thank you. Any other comments from council? All right. Not seeing any additional comments, then we will do a roll call vote on this item, please.
One second. All right, going to roll call vote on item 5.1, the resolution for assessments for the curb and sidewalk, curb, and gutter improvements. Beginning with Basara.
Yes.
Carlino.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
And Vaseka.
Yes.
Right, and that passes unanimously.
Okay. Thanks very much, folks. We'll move on to item 5.2, which is a resolution authorizing the interfund loan and issuance of city warrants financing 2024 curb and sidewalk construction projects. And so we have Lee Griffin, who is the Finance Director, on the agenda, but I do believe that City Clerk Claire Trimble is ready to present on this as well.
Yeah. Hi, again, City Clerk Claire Trimble. This item does not actually require a public hearing. I'm noting that just for those of you who are sticklers for parliamentary procedure. However, um, we wanted to group them together so that they would stay together. And also, this gives me an opportunity to recognize the hard work that the Finance Department did in keeping the costs down for the taxpayers. So this is an unusual way of financing this kind of project, but we put our heads together with some bond counsel and in, uh, an advisor on municipal financing, and we found a creative way to get a very favorable interest rate on this loan and to keep costs down by being able to decrease the amount of like closing costs and that sort of thing that we would have had to pay if we went out on the commercial bond market. So we will be using an interfund loan system called warrants, and which is somewhat old-fashioned in the state code. And so this resolution is asking you to authorize the interfund loan and the issuance of warrants in order to fund this project. I'm happy to take any questions.
Excellent, Ms. Trimble. Thank you very much. Questions from council? But Counselor Jordan, your hand is raised. Do you have a question? Just hold ever, no problem. Any questions from council? Okay. I'm not seeing any questions. Then we'll go ahead and we'll hear the main motion. Again, this item was referred from Budget and Finance, and Counselor Basara will read the motion for the floor now.
Sure thing. Um, I move that we approve a resolution authorizing an interfund loan and the issuance and sale of city warrants in connection with financing 2024, 2024 curb and sidewalk construction, construction projects.
All right. Thank you very much. So the motion is on the floor. This opens the public hearing. And if any members of the public wish to speak on this agenda item, please come forward now. And if you'll share your name for the record, that would be great. We have three minutes for public comment. And I will go ahead and time you when you get started.
Chester C-H-E-S-C-O, and I don't think I quite understand the Nelson, but I think from what I understand, it's going to increase taxes. And I'm not entirely certain on that, but I think it will, and that's, and I apologize. So that's, yeah.
Thank you for your comments tonight, Chester. Do any other members of the public wish to speak on this agenda item? I'm not seeing any in the room. And how about online? All right. No members of public raising their hand online. So that wraps up our public comment and the public hearing for this agenda item. And we'll bring it back to city council members for any comments or questions. I'm not seeing any in the room or online. So then I do believe that we can go and move ahead with a roll call vote.
Right. Voting on item 5.2, the authorization of the interfund loan and issuance of city warrants to fund the, for financing of the 2024 curb and sidewalk construction projects, beginning with Carlino.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Vaseka.
Yes.
And Basara.
Yes.
And that also passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you very much. So we'll next move on next to item 5.3, which is our third and final public hearing for the evening. This is in regards to an ordinance revising Missoula Municipal Code 8.02, adopting the Missoula City County Health Code. Um, and I will turn it over to, we have, uh, a member of the Health Department here that is ready to speak. And so Charlie, if you'll say your name for the record. And looks like you're all queued in here. Oh, great. Charlie Shane, thank you.
Is that Sharon yet?
Uh, we can, oh, I can, there it is.
There it is.
All right.
It's not going full screen, but...
If you want to take a minute to hit from beginning, and no problem, take your time and... That top bar, that little arrow to the left, generally will give you a full screen.
It's showing full screen.
Oh, is it? Okay. It might just be delayed. We can see it.
I guess we can just get going on then. All right. Uh, thanks for having me today. My name is Charlie Shane. I'm an environmental health manager and sanitary in Missoula Public Health. I'm here today to present on a update to Regulation 1 of the Missoula City County Health Code, passed approved by the Board of Health on April 17, 2025. Okay, so in Montana, both state and local government sets rules governing the permitting and installation of onsite wastewater treatment and disposal systems, more commonly referred to as septic systems. The purpose of these rules are to protect public health and environmental quality from the risks associated with improper disposal of wastewater treatment. Department of Environmental Quality Circular 4 outlines the minimum design standards for the size, design, and construction of septic systems. And these rules are set by the state. Regulation 1, on the other hand, of the Missoula City County Health Code sets local wastewater regulations. Local waste, local regulation of wastewater treatment and disposal systems is required under state law and may be no less stringent stringent than state standards. No idea what's going on with the slideshow. Okay, so, um, DEQ changed their rules recently to allow new onsite wastewater systems in fill in a response to a directive by the 2023 legislature. Um, up until then, only replacement systems could be located in fill. Missoula has had onsite wastewater treatment and disposal system rules since 1966. Um, and currently prohibits fill systems for use other than replacement in certain advanced treatment systems. Uh, these regulations were last updated in 2018. Now that DEQ allows new systems in fill, we have the ability to add this option to our local health code. This gives property owners and developers more flexibility on difficult sites. Fill systems were previously prohibited because if not constructed properly, wastewater can surface, potentially exposing people, animals, and pets to pathogens present in wastewater. However, the new DEQ rules have requirements and design criteria in place to ensure wastewater does not seep out of fill. So what is fill? Fill is an artificially placed soil used to level the ground surface and fill in depressions. Um, what it would be used for in Missoula is repairing or modifying disturbed sites or damaged sites to create suitable drain field location. Uh, there are very specific soil and fill requirements, so they are prohibited in tight soils like clay and silt. Only certain, and only certain soil types can be used as fill material. These there are environmental protection criteria in place, and they cannot be used to overcome horizontal or vertical setbacks. So this would include horizontal setbacks to features like steep slopes and floodplains, as well as vertical setbacks to limiting layers like bedrock, high groundwater, and other impervious layers. DEQ has additional design and approval criteria for fill systems above and beyond that of conventional wastewater treatment systems. These include engineered design reports, which must be approved prior to the placement of fill material, additional soil testing. And fill material must be placed into lifts and compacted to achieve stable soil structure. Uh, certification and as builds are also required within 90 days prior to any final inspection and approval. So the change in regulation of the health code was fairly simple. What we did was we moved discussion of septic systems in fill out of the replacement system section and into the design and location system, uh, section. Systems in fill will have to meet DEQ design, citing and construction criteria. And it is made clear that fill cannot be used to come any horizontal or vertical setbacks to sewage systems. Uh, so state law requires the health board to recommend rules and rule changes to the governing body. In Missoula, the interlocal agreement, which created the City County Health Department, and the health board states the local governing body is both the city council and the county commissioners. The county commissioners most recently passed a resolution to adopt the revised version of Regulation 1 of the health code on August 7 of 2025. But both the county commissioners and the city council have previously adopted the health code by reference into their ordinance. So the health board held two public hearings and approved this change on April 17 of this year and recommended that the local governing bodies adopt the revised Regulation 1 by reference. There were no public comments received other than a recommendation to approve by the Water Quality Advisory Council. So the current health code was adopted by the city council by reference and can be found in, Missoula Municipal Code 8.02, titled "Missoula City County Health Code Adopted by Reference." We are requesting that the city council consider an ordinance replacing the older version of Regulation 1 with this newer version, which was approved by the health board. And so all I have left here is the proposed motion, and I can read that up. Usually I'd like to have it up on the screen, but it doesn't appear to be working. Um, so our proposed, what we propose as a motion would be to revise Chapter 8.02 of the Missoula Municipal Code entitled "Missoula City County Health Code Adopted by Reference" by incorporating the updated version of Regulation 1 wastewater treatment and disposal systems as approved by Missoula City County Health Board on April 17, 2025.
Okay. Mr. Shane, thank you. Sorry, there was a technical issue with the presentation. We can load that into the agenda later for local, uh, for reference. And then just so folks know, we do have the referral, the ordinance, health code amendments, and then the city council regulation proposed changes attached to the resolution. So all of the legal documents that will be amended have been uploaded. Mr. Shane, before you go, there's going to be some questions, and I see that before we ask those, though, we'll go ahead and make sure that there is no additional presentations from staff. I think you're the only ones here unless there's anything you wish to present from the health board. Counselor Nugent.
Nope, I just brought it forward as a council member on the health board, but not even going to pretend to be an expert, so thank you.
Okay, excellent. And with that, keep your microphone on then, because as I believe this was probably heard through the, um, Public Safety, Health, and Operations Committee, and because Counsel Anderson's not here, if you'll go ahead and read the motion for the floor.
Okay, happy to do that.
Wait, sorry. Let me get questions from council first. Sorry about that. Counselor Jordan.
Thank you. I wasn't able to attend the committee meeting when we talked about this. And one of the questions I have is, is it going to be up to septic installers to create the fill?
Yeah, so, so that, the fill that they're proposing has to be, well, proposed to the health department and approved by us, and it has to be, submitted to us through an engineer, um, showing that it's going to meet all of the requirements for the bill, such as compaction, and that it's going to create a stable, um, basically straight, stable media or surface for that drain field replacement, so that we're not going to have any effluent or, uh, basically sewage, um, servicing.
Great. One more question, please. Um, oh my gosh. Just forgot my second question. It was about, um, frustrating. Well, if you want, we can come back if that, sorry about that. Not a problem, not a problem. Everybody's looking, and I forgot my question. Um, yeah, there's, there's some additional questions. Give you a second. It'll come back. Yeah, there's, there's some additional questions. Give you a second. It'll come back and we'll come back. No worries. Counselor Farmer?
Thanks. I just, out of curiosity, it says this will not be predominantly in the city limit, so it's going to be in the county. Is this, is this mostly a response to, for like the Sealy Lake area? Or why, why is?
No, so yeah, so this doesn't have, have, it's not a direct response to Sealy Lake in any way. This is actually just allowing systems and areas that, well, really it's allowing systems in locations that have been damaged by construction. So somebody, we've had some cases where people have dug out foundations thinking that that is where the house was going to go, but it's the only available space for a drain field. And simply filling that in has not been allowed up until, well, unless this, this ordinance is passed. And recently, DEQ, so the Department of Environmental Quality, came up with some criteria in order to allow that. And we've had a couple of situations in the past few years where this would, this would work out well for, you know, developers and, and property owners to be able to develop their land. As far as the question I think you asked about city limits or?
Yeah, I'm just more curious, where, where will this?
Yeah, so generally it's, it's in the county outside of city limits, but there are parcels within Missoula City that are still on septic systems. It's very few. I can't think of more than a handful off the top of my head and those are already in place. And so if those were to be replaced, for instance, because the system failed, even without this ordinance, we would, we would find a way to replace that system. So it's very rare within the city.
Thank you. It's helpful. All right. Thank you. Counselor Jordan?
Thanks. It came back to me. That was actually something I wanted to ask, but that, adding on to that, if people do find that their septic systems have aged out and they're within city limits, will they then be required to connect to the municipal supply?
Yeah, so there, there are requirements to connect into, into municipal if it's available. Generally speaking, though, the ones that aren't currently connected, aren't connected because there's just no practical way to do so. Like there's a railroad or something blocking the way. There's some of the examples I can think of.
Thank you. And just to make sure I understand, fill cannot be used to overcome horizontal or vertical setback. Does that mean if somebody's on a really sloppy property, they can't build a step of fill to put their drain field in?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Or, or to get away from an area of high groundwater, something like that.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Good questions. And so it's a bit of a belt and suspenders. We're going to have it there just in case for the off chance that it might.
Right. Well, and, and with the 2023 legislature, they required both the city council, through our interlocal agreement, requires the city council and commissioners to approve it. So. It's right over here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So any additional questions, any other questions from council members? Okay, not seeing any additional questions at this time. Thank you. So my apologies. Please, Vice Chair for Public Safety, Health and Operations, Counselor Vasika.
Thank you. I move to adopt an ordinance to revise Chapter 8.02 Missoula Municipal Code entitled Missoula City County Health Code, adopted by reference by incorporating the updated version of Regulation 1 Wastewater Treatment and Disposal Systems, as approved by the Missoula City County Health Board on April 17th, 2025.
All right. Thank you very much. Motion's on the floor. That opens the public hearing. And we welcome public comment at this time on this agenda item. Are there any members of the public that wish to make comment on this agenda item? I'm not seeing anybody in the room. I'll just do a quick check online here. Not seeing any hands raised online. Give it a second. All right. Not seeing any public comment on this agenda item. That does wrap up the public hearing. It brings it back to council for further questions or any comments that folks have. All right. Pretty straightforward item. Not really seeing any other questions or comments. So we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
All right, voting this evening on item 5.3, the ordinance revising the Missoula City County Health Code to incorporate the wastewater treatment and disposal systems as approved by health board, beginning with Farmer.
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
Yes.
Becerra?
Yes.
And Carlini?
Yes.
And that's 10 in favor and none opposed.
Okay. Thank you all very much. And thank you, Mr. Shane, for your presentation this evening. All right, that wraps up our public hearings tonight. We'll move on to our next area of business, which is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda were improved, were approved in city council committees to be placed on the consent agenda to save time at council meetings by voting on them as a package. The city clerk will read the list aloud so citizens watching on MCAT will know what is on the consent agenda. We'll also show those on screen, which is helpful. And then we'll invite community members to comment on these items before council makes a vote. So. Ms. Trimble, when you're ready to go ahead and read off the consent agenda, please.
All right. On this evening's consent agenda, we begin with accounts payable. We have a motion to approve accounts payable for checks stated on August 26th, 2025 in the amount of $3,069,027.05. Next up, we have a motion to authorize and approve the mayor to sign a four-year collective bargaining agreement with the Missoula Parking Commission Employees Association Local 8514 Union. Next item of business is a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a professional services agreement with WGM Group for the Lincoln Hills and Lincolnwood Preliminary Engineering Report at a cost not to exceed $97,625. And our final item this evening is a motion to set a public hearing on October 6th, 2025 and adopt a resolution of intent to annex the subject property, which is known as Paisley Park Addition or Annexation Rezoning in Subdivision, legally described as Tracks 5 and 7 of Certificate of Survey 3176, located in township, or Section 12 Township 13 North, Range 20 West, PMM, Missoula County, Montana, as shown in Exhibit A, and zone upon annexation to the Sutupquin Traditional Neighborhood Development Form-Based Zoning Code, TransxOS Open Space TS Neighborhood Edge T4-O Neighborhood General Open, T4-R Neighborhood General Restricted, and T5 Mixed Use Center. And refer this item and the Paisley Park subdivision and master site plan to the Land Use and Planning Committee on September 24th, 2025.
All right. Thank you very much. The, all items for the consent agenda have been read on record. Do we have any members of the public that wish to speak on the consent agenda this evening? All right. Not seeing any in the room. Any members of the public online that wish? I see Kyla Tripp, Kyla Tripp online. Please go ahead and unmute yourself. I'll go ahead and time you for your three-minute comment on this side whenever you're ready.
Okay, sorry. I don't know if you can hear me, but.
We sure can.
My name's Kyla and I am in that 44 Ranch area, talking about the Paisley Park zoning request. And I would highly recommend to not authorize this. First and foremost, this is a Spokane company that will receive every profit from every housing sale and rent. Just seems kind of silly to let that go out into a different state. We might get property taxes for it, but that's not going to offset any of the costs for roads. The amount of students that are going, probably about 60 students per dwelling will be going into the Hellgate Elementary School District, which is already at capacity, barely, you know, support all of the new complexes that have recently been built here. And not to mention the fact that we as in this, we cannot, if you're trying to make affordable housing, this is not the housing people want to live in. To have 671 new houses built on four acre, or 40 acres, or acres is ridiculous. You have to understand that when we talk about affordable housing, that families want to grow up and they want yards, they want memories with kids. They don't want one room, one window homes to live in. And it's continuing to get worse and worse and we're doing the same thing over and over. This is definition of insanity. I don't know why we would want an out-of-state builder to get all of the profit and all of the money and us benefit in a negative manner. I know I'm not the only one that feels this way. However, I'm apparently one of the only ones on this meeting. But I just hope that you speak up for Missoulians and that you understand that we do not need this many more dwellings. It is not helping bring down costs on housing. My taxes have gone up to almost $800 a month and I, and it's more affordable housing comes in and I, my taxes just keep going up. Everyone's in this neighborhood goes up. So I don't see how we're making affordable housing by building these. It's not helping. We're bombarding the schools. We're not benefiting Missoulians. We're benefiting some developer in Spokane. Great for him, not for us.
Ms. Tripp, thank you for attending this evening and providing your public comment. Anybody else online? For any item on the consent agenda? All right. I'm not seeing any additional public comment. I'll bring it back to council to see if any council members wish to separate any of the agenda items tonight. All right. Not seeing any requests to separate items. That means we can continue forward and vote on the consent agenda. And we can do so by voice vote, please.
All right, voting on this evening's consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? And that passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. We'll now move on to regular business agenda item number nine. Our first item is 9.1 AB, which is for our budget fiscal year 2026, resolutions, levying assessments. I do believe we have, Ms. Trimble, will this be you or this be Ms. Griffin?
I'm, I'm back again.
You're back again. Fantastic. Well, we are ready to hear your presentation, please.
All right, Claire Trimble, City Clerk. This is one final item from the budget that we just needed a little extra time to get those numbers from the state and plug them in. This is the Business Improvement District, also known as the Flushing District. And this is, this is the additional care and maintenance that we spend or that we, the residents and businesses downtown have decided to self-assess in order to keep our downtown clean and tidy. It pays for extra garbage, extra snow plowing, extra passes when, at the end of the season, when they pick up all of the grit and dirt that comes off from the, when the winter finally subsides into the springtime. So this is what keeps our downtown really vibrant and beautiful. This is a 10-year assessment. It was last renewed in 2000. That was a question that was posed between when we first brought this up and this evening, it was actually passed again by the members of the downtown area in December of 2019 for another 10 years. So this is a way that we keep, that they pay a little extra to have downtown be really nice. And we have figured out the proper apportionments based on the statute for the various downtown business owners, residences, and that includes city and county. We pay our share as well. And we are just voting in order to send these assessments over to the county and have them assessed on the tax rolls.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And questions from Counselor, Counselor Vasika?
Thanks. My microphone's really loud. So I'm not quite sure how to word this, so I'll try my best. So when this was first assessed and, or first put on the books in the early 2000s, was this put out and if you didn't want it, you had to protest it? Or was it, you had to get a certain amount of signatures to allow this to pass? Or was it just a certain, like the city council made it happen? And so if you don't like it, you have to protest as opposed to if you like it, you have to get signatures to get it to pass? Does that make sense?
I think it does. Yeah. Ms. Trimble, do you see the essence of Counselor Vasika's question?
I do. It was well, well before my time, but when this was first proposed and passed, yes, there was a, there was a protest period and individual property owners had the opportunity to protest. And I, I'm not, not certain if there is a statutory threshold, which would change the amount of votes that was needed. Sometimes that's true, but because it's a special district, they, they do carefully count the properties and the, and the protests and those who are not wanting to join in before they pass that. But I couldn't tell you the exact numbers off the top of my head.
Thank you. And you did email those to me last week and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. You bet. Any other questions from council members? All right. I'm not seeing any additional questions from council. And so if we could hear a main motion, this is also a budget. So I will look to President Cheryl for making the motion, then we will put the motion on the floor and take any public comment on this motion.
Okay, let me. I recommend that we adopt a resolution levying taxes on the lots, pieces, and parcels of land located the Downtown Business Improvement District of the city of Missoula in the amount of 475,462.21 cents for the fiscal year of 2026 in accordance with 7-12-1132 MCA.
Thank you, Counselor Cheryl. All right, motions on the floor. Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Okay, not seeing any in the room. How about folks online? Anybody wishing to make public comment? For this agenda item? Not seeing any folks online raise their hands. So we'll come back to council. Any comments or additional questions? Yes, please, Counselor Vasika.
Thank you for indulging me. I will be in support of this unhappily so, just because this isn't the time or place to protest the way that this was established. I do encourage business owners in this area, if they want to, if they don't like it, to send in protests because they need 50 or 50% or more to protest for it not to be assessed. And out of 445 business owners, 13 protested. So I mean, if you don't, if you do like it, which it seems to be, then I guess who am I to hold it back? I do want to point out that, let me get that pulled up here. Type of property. So there are residential properties that are assessed in this. The only way that they would be exempt is if it was an area that was zoned primarily residential. So that is a zoning district letter that begins with R under the city zoning ordinance is Title 20. There are a few residential apartment complexes in this and they are assessed at a pretty high level. So that does go on to rent. The property owner is not going to eat that. So that does, in effect, affect affordable housing. So I just wanted to put that out there for folks to be aware of.
Okay. Thank you for your comment, Counselor Vasika. Any additional council questions or comments? Okay. All right. Not seeing any then. Ms. Trimble, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
All right, voting this evening on item 9.1.8.9B. The Business Improvement District Resolution Levying Assessments on the properties in that area, beginning with Jones.
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
Yes.
Becerra?
Yes.
Carlini?
Yes.
And Farmer?
Yes.
That passes with 10 in favor, none opposed.
Okay. Thank you very much. And then just a note for members of the public. If, if you're interested in knowing more about the Downtown Business Improvement District, the Downtown Missoula Partnership hosts, or is, is the, basically the administrator for the Business Improvement District and there's information in their annual report and such online. And you can see what activities they're up to there. All right. So that wraps up that agenda item. We'll move on to 9.1. G. We'll move on to nine point one point G, which is the Public Works and Mobility Committee Report. And specifically, we're looking at the Phillips Street School Speed Zone. So we know we have had, um, the staff presentation. I have, um, we've got Public Works, uh, Director Jeremy Keen, um, online. Looks like we have the presentation queued up. And so, Mr. Keen, would you go, like to go ahead? And I know that the, um, and we also have Ryan Gelf, that's on with Public Works as well. Um, are you going to go ahead and give us an overview of the presentation that was provided at committee? Or are you presenting new information tonight?
Yeah, if, uh, if I can just kick us off and, um, then Ryan has a presentation with some new information and some questions and answers from, uh, some of the discussion we've heard since last Wednesday. So.
Fantastic.
Um, great. Um, so I'm Jeremy Keen. I'm the Director for Public Works Mobility. Um, thanks for the opportunity to speak about this tonight. Um, I think, you know, sometimes it feels like we're unresponsive or nothing gets done. But just wanted to highlight a few things that have happened in the North Side, West Side in the last few years in response to growth and traffic concerns. Um, as most of you know, last week, we opened the Scott and Phillips Roundabout, which was on time and under budget. And we really appreciate everyone's patience while we got that project done. I think it's going to be a really meaningful improvement for the whole neighborhood. Prior to that, we, um, installed a speed radar sign on the bridge. We made crossing improvements at the Turner and Scott intersection. We reconstructed Turner and Warden with complete sidewalks and bike lanes. Uh, we repaved and completed sidewalks in North Fifth. And we added, uh, quick build traffic calming in the neighborhood with more to come. And over the past few weeks, um, we refreshed the striping on Phillips Street. We added delineators and some temporary flashing beacons of Hawthorne. We secured grant money for some street art at that intersection, which was really neat. And, um, we also worked with Parks Department to schedule some tree trimming, and we are working with PD to coordinate increased enforcement. Um, and finally, we prepared an engineering study to set the school speed zone, which is tonight's action item. So we're pretty busy. I want to thank Ryan Gelf for being here tonight. Um, this is the same staff that's working on code reform, another high priority for council, managing multiple federal grants with tight timelines, developing over twenty other CIP projects that are in the queue, and responding to numerous other traffic safety, um, concerns each week. Um, so Ryan's prepared a, a really thoughtful, well-researched engineering study for the, the school zone, um, which he presented last week. And he's also prepared some additional information to respond to questions and concerns, um, from constituents. And I appreciate that this is an emotional issue. Uh, when a child gets hit, we take it very seriously. And the reality is that, um, we can only do so much with engineering. Traffic safety really relies on the three E's, which is engineering, education, and enforcement. And you could add a fourth E to that, which is evaluation, meaning we have to come back and continue to measure the effectiveness of what we're doing and make adjustments, which is what we're proposing to do here. Now, we often joke that there's seventy-five thousand traffic engineers in Missoula. And that's because traffic and more broadly, transportation is something that we all experience every day. Uh, but these recommendations are based on engineering expertise, experience, and best practices from a team of professionals that have studied this issue. And listened to a wide variety of concerns and ideas, collected data, researched these topics to bring you the best, most balanced solutions we can offer. So I think it's important, uh, if you're going to change those recommendations, to do so with caution and with good information. So thank you for your consideration. I'll turn it over to Ryan to take us through some of those, um, concerns that were raised last week.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Keen. Mr. Gelf?
Yeah, thanks, Jeremy. Um, thank you all for your time. I'll try to be respectful and get through this, um, as briefly as I can, but also provide you the information you need for this item tonight on the Phillips Street School Speed Zone. Um, so while we're here, um, emphasizing what Jeremy just said, um, we've witnessed some alarming and unacceptable crash trends on Phillips Street. This initiated Public Works to initiate a traffic study earlier this spring. Um, we completed that this summer and then, um, are bringing this item to council for action to establish a school speed zone on Phillips Street. Little bit about the study. Um, anytime we go in and alter speed limits, federal and state statute requires an engineering study to support or, um, serve as the basis for that altered speed zone. Um, these studies need to be data-driven, but also, uh, cover qualitative information specific to the street, um, including contexts like land use, um, and other aspects of the street that aren't covered in just the data we can gather. This study was, uh, collaborative with Lowell Elementary School. Um, they helped us identify some of the recommendations you'll see in here. Um, so I'll step through those recommendations and then touch on some of the other stuff that's been done that Jeremy mentioned as well. But I'll have some pictures as well to provide some visuals. Um, so the first recommendation that was implemented this summer is, um, what we call Hawthorne Daylighting. Um, we went in, uh, and delineated, uh, what we call bulbouts, uh, which is the paint and delineators that, um, kind of restrict parking in the no parking areas. Um, these are shown and are effective in improving crosswalk visibility, reducing effective crossing distance. They have some traffic calming effects. Um, and they also, um, first and foremost, are, are going to prevent some of the parking and loading and unloading in designated no parking zones that can compromise intersection and crosswalk safety. Um, we've also refreshed all the pavement markings on Phillips Street between Scott and Shakespeare. Um, look, here is, uh, an example. Uh, this is the intersection of Shakespeare, the East Leg, um, with, with new continental school style crosswalk markings implemented. I mentioned we worked closely with Lowell, um, on some of these recommendations, particularly, um, identifying a priority crossing location of Phillips uh, that, that sort of balanced the needs of the users in the area, um, and was deemed safest, the safest location for us to encourage children and families to use. Um, so this graphic does a pretty good job of, of showing how this, this west leg of Hawthorne Street provides the most direct access to and from Lowell's Elementary's entrance, shown in blue there, um, as well as the West Side Park, shown in green. Hawthorne Street also sees a lot less turning movements across the crosswalks, so that was another reason we wanted to encourage crossing at this location as well. So in that prioritization, um, we identified the west leg of Hawthorne as being the priority crossing location with the school. Um, and we deployed RRFBs out there in time for the start of school. Another big aspect, um, is education enforcement. We've been working with the school as well as, uh, the Missoula Police Department, um, to emphasize to parents picking up and dropping off kids the need to, um, do so safely and legally, uh, not loading and unloading in no parking zones where, um, that, that can lead to safety issues elsewhere. Jeremy mentioned, we're celebrating the, uh, recent opening of the Scott Phillips Roundabout on Friday. Um, this, this is a really awesome safety, uh, investment at this location, especially as the North Side's growing. Um, not only is it going to make crossing Scott and Phillips safer and easier, but it's going to slow vehicle speeds through this location. Um, it has street lighting that'll improve nighttime safety. Um, it also, uh, we anticipate will significantly improve operations and reduce some of the excessive queuing we see on Phillips Street, which has been contributing to some of the safety issues on Phillips Street as well. And then last but not least, and the, the reason we're bringing this item here before you today is, um, the recommended school speed zone um, from the study. This is, this graphic illustrates Public Works and Mobility's recommendation for council consideration tonight. Um, we're recommending a school speed zone be established between Burton Street, um, and Scott Street, signed at twenty miles per hour, uh, when children are present. So kind of round this out, um, as Jeremy mentioned, we, we got questions from various council members that they forwarded ahead of time. Um, they all supported some constituent questions and comments. Really appreciate that. Um, we've taken those and sort of synthesized those to provide some concise and direct responses that'll hopefully help inform you for this item here before you. Um, so the first of those is why not recommend a speed limit of fifteen miles per hour instead of twenty miles per hour? Um, there's, there's some concern that, um, folks always travel over the posted speed limit, so fifteen feels safer. Um, and the reason for twenty is it's more consistent with speed zones we've set in the past. Um, a lot of research has shown consistency in speed zones and school zones improves compliance and can lead to safer outcomes. Um, safety research also shows that there's really only a marginal difference between safety risks at twenty miles per hour as compared to fifteen miles per hour. And that coupled with, um, the fact that sustaining fifteen miles per hour is typically impractical without requiring aggressive traffic calming or very consistent enforcement, which aren't always possible on a street like Phillips. Um, then the next question is why use when children present instead of set times? So federal law requires that a school speed zone not be implemented for a twenty-four-seven condition. But, um, on a specific condition, whether that be a timeframe or in this case, um, it does allow for us to use the when children present plaque. With when children present is widely used and enforced nationwide. It covers variable activity, such as what we see on Phillips Street with the presence of the school, the community center, and the park. And in our opinion, it gives police discretion to enforce speeds outside of a fixed timeframe when there might, may still be activity at the park or the school or have a community event going on. Um, we have had issues with fixed timeframes in the past and getting questioned and having to revisit those. So this, this felt like a good balanced approach for reasonable full-time enforcement to the extent that we can do that with a school speed zone. We heard questions about where the flashing beacons should go. Um, we propose, we have them out there on Hawthorne Street. There were questions as to why it wasn't Shakespeare that was chosen or both intersections. Um, as I mentioned, we work directly with Lowell School on the decision to put those and deploy them at Hawthorne. The na- national guidance around using these flashing beacons strongly suggests not doing so and in simultaneously at closely spaced intersections. You can imagine the situation where, um, you know, one can distract from another or, you know, one reduces the effectiveness or enough from the other. Um, so that's why, um, we, we typically try to do these at, at focused locations where they can be the most effective. Um, and then, of course, we, you notice in the image, hopefully, that the RFBs we did deploy are on trailers. That's intentional. We are going to continue to observe and gather data as time moves forward. And we have the ability to pivot and put those at, at Shakespeare if need be. Um, and, and it gives us some flexibility before we install these permanently on Phillips. Um, there are some concerns raised about the crosswalks and how they're marked and not being reflective. Um, I wanted to clarify that the Hawthorne crossings were laid in, uh, retro reflective thermoplastic this summer. All other markings along Phillips, including the crosswalks and the long lines, are in high durability epoxy pavement markings. All these markings meet or exceed current retro reflectivity standards. How will the new speed zone be enforced? So, um, we typically work directly with PD to, to notify them when we change a speed zone um, and request enforcement from the onset, ongoing enforcement after that initial period. Um, it depends on the police department's resources, priorities, um, and their discretion. We have also coordinated, as I mentioned, with Lowell to, um, hopefully have some education, uh, efforts for parents um, and, and potentially through the school resource officer around pickup and drop-off times as well. Um, there were concerns about the study being done during the summer and, um, you know, not capturing school hours. I did want to also clarify that, um, all the data used in the study, um, the traffic and volume data, that is, were, was, were collected in April of two thousand and twenty-five during a typical school day. Um, reported crash data is the most recent we have access to from MDT's database, and that's the years of two thousand and twenty through two thousand and twenty-four. And of course, with the roundabout being open, we anticipate some changes in patterns, um, for the better. Um, and we'll continue to collect data as time goes on. And then last but not least, um, what is the posted speed at the Scott Street Roundabout? Um, the posted speed is actually the, the existing posted speeds on Scott Street and Phillips Street today. Um, the design speed, however, is fifteen miles per hour. And that means that the geometry within the intersection was intentionally designed to naturally slow drivers to that speed. Um, we do have the yellow fifteen mile per hour advisory signs on each roundabout approach. Those are added for emphasis, but they aren't enforceable limits. With that, um, I'll turn it over back to you all. Uh, appreciate your time and hopefully this information helps you tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Ryan. Really appreciate your comprehensive, uh, presentation. Thanks for making sure you answered questions that came forward at the committee or perhaps since then. So we have had our staff presentation and, um, now it's time for questions from council. And so Counselor Savage?
Thank you. Um, I, first of all, I just wanted to say thank you. I know that, um, getting this roundabout finished and on time and under budget was a Herculean effort. I know that it was a compressed construction, um, timeline. And I do really, really appreciate all the effort that went into it. And I also really appreciate, as a longtime North Sider, um, the fact that it got moved up the CIP. And I think that was largely in part to the development that has gone on, on Scott Street, and I know that was a discussion. And I, um, I thank you, the North Side thanks you. Um, I do have a couple of questions, and I am curious about, um, I know that I asked in committee about some of the temporary measures that you have on Phillips Street. So there's the flashing, um, flashing light with also the signage. Um, there's the, um, the bulbout that looks to be temporary. Um, and I guess I'm just curious, like, will any of those things be made permanent? You know, are you looking at a permanent bulbout? Are we looking at permanent signage and flashing lights? It sounds like the paint, I mean, is as permanent as paint can be. Um, but I am curious about, you know, what other traffic calming, um, could be permanently in place on Phillips.
Great, thank you. Okay, no problem. Ryan, do you want to take that?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so I guess, first of all, I, I'd just say we are somewhat limited in the how much traffic calming we can install on a street like Phillips. It is a primary fire route, so we have to be conscientious of, um, things we put out there that would really impede a fire apparatus vehicle. Um, so we are really limited to the bulbouts, um, things like that, that still maintain a, a wide enough travelway for a fire truck to get through. That being said, I, I mean, there are quite a few permanent traffic calming features out on Phillips Street today. Um, you know, we've got some of these curb extensions or curb islands on, on most of the intersection corners, some chicanes. Um, so Phillips does have sort of more comprehensive traffic calming than most of our collector streets in town. Um, with that, I, I'd say we likely don't have a, an immediate plan, um, for the foreseeable future to make these, um, these quick build elements that we've put out there currently permanent, um, in any, any, you know, near or mid, medium-term timeframe. Um, but we are committed to maintaining those. Um, they, they should still remain effective with proper maintenance. Um, at, at, you know, sort of, um, not allowing the parking, um, in, improving visibility. Um, and then as Jeremy mentioned, we are, um, we were successful in securing a grant to paint a mural in that, uh, bulped-out area at Hawthorne Street. So, um, we do plan for, for those elements to stay out there for, for quite some time with some maintenance as well.
Follow-up?
Thank you. Uh, and a follow-up question. I am just curious about, uh, we seem to have different, um, I guess, speed zones in front of many of our schools in Missoula. And I'm just curious, um, are, is there any sort of standard for that, like either Missoula-wide or statewide? Um, does it depend on the street in terms of like, if it's a collector or if it's a, uh, you know, a place that fire trucks need to go? I, I'm just, it doesn't seem to be uniform across the city, and I just wonder if you could speak to that.
Yeah, thanks. Um, that's a great observation. There isn't a great uniformity across all of our streets citywide. Um, we have been working on a school zone policy and do plan that, that will add some consistency um, and, and set some guidelines or, or at least some standards for how we sign and what we sign on, on school zones, um, throughout the city. on school zones throughout the city. We have, we have that policy in draft form and have been within, you know, the time we have to work on that amongst the many other priorities Jeremy's mentioned. You know, a plan to bring that forward relatively soon. Yeah, that's kind of where that's at. I do know we've been knocking out some of the low hanging fruit as our resources and kind of staff time allows, including replacing what we call the bouncing ball beacons with the pedestrian actuated RFBs throughout school zones around Missoula, bringing some of the signage reflectivity standards up to snuff around town. But yeah, in terms of that comprehensive kind of consistent policy, we're, that's still in the works currently.
Great, thank you. One other follow up. And then I just had a question about the when children are present. I think Ms. Farmer spoke in committee and I think was very articulate about the fact that there is a public park there. I mean, I've lived on the Northside since 2009, and I agree with her, it seems to be children are always present in that park. I mean, just given, you know, the Lowell After School program. And so I guess I'm just curious, like, why that language and why, how is it enforceable? And that might be a question for, I don't know if Chief Collier is here.
Chief Collier is here this evening. So Ryan, do you want to answer the first part of that? And then I'm sure Chief Collier would be happy to help round out that.
Yeah, I'd be happy, and I appreciate that Chief Collier's here to speak and provide his input as well. But, I mean, I think the reason we recommended the note when children are present language is just for that reason, that there are always seemingly children in the area. We can't just blanket sign a school zone for a 24/7 reduced limit. So we felt that this plaque, as opposed to a fixed time, that's inevitably going to have children in or near the school zone outside of that timeframe, gives officers the most discretion to enforce unsafe speeds at all times of the day and not just within what some might call an arbitrary timeframe.
Okay, thank you. Chief Collier, do you wish to add anything to that?
Evening, Mayor, and council members. For the record, Michael Collier, I'm the police chief. When I was thinking through this, really what I wish we could do is just post it 24/7, right? I think that's the most consistent thing for the traveling public to get used to and just create good habits there, and it certainly would be the most convenient thing for us from enforcement and prosecution. But we can't do that. This is controlled at a higher authority, and we have to do what you heard earlier, which is to regulate a specific time or when children are present. And this is going to be a shade of gray here, you know? What does present mean? Does it need to be within the actual block that the moving violation is in, or is it within line of sight? What is a child? Is it going to be, you know, it's pretty obvious when it's a little second grader, but, you know, 15, 16, 17, 18, you know? At what point are we going to make that call? So it is going to be a little bit of a, you know, we're going to have to ramp up some education on that, maybe check with other jurisdictions where there's some precedent set, you know, to meet the elements of when children are present. And we'll kind of coordinate that with the city attorney about what they think is a good standard to meet those elements, and then we'll kind of follow suit from that.
Okay. Thank you for that context. I certainly did not realize this was a state law parameter, so this has been helpful, I think, for me to understand. Any additional questions for the chief? Chief Collier will, he's up with them. Stan? All right, thanks. I appreciate that. And not to say that you might not get more, I'm sorry, I'm going to go take a seat for now if you want, and then we'll go ahead and ask additional council members to ask their questions. Thanks, Chief Collier. Councilor Farmer?
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan, for this presentation. I really appreciate it, and you did answer a lot of the questions I submitted, so I really do appreciate that. And I did walk out there on Friday, and those quick builds I think are going to be really helpful, and it looks amazing right now. One of my questions is, I think in the presentation on Wednesday, you had mentioned that a 15 mile per hour speed zone is reserved for places where, I think, you have to correct me on how you phrase this, but something along the lines of driver response time, that's reserved for where there's not enough time for drivers to respond, such as like tight corners or things like that. Is that, can you clarify that on when we do post a 15 mile per hour speed?
Yeah. Yeah, you bet. So, yeah, I think I said something along the lines of 15 miles per hour is very hard to achieve and is typically reserved for streets that are either too narrow or don't have enough sight distance for adequate perception reaction time for a driver. We don't have any streets, to my knowledge, posted that low in Missoula, although I, you know, state law does allow that as a floor for posting a speed limit. So it is a tool available to council to use if you choose to go that way. You know, just in our experience and best practices, again, the risk between 20 and 15 is fairly marginal. We think we'll get, there's, you know, it's, 20 is appropriate in a location like this, given the context. And it may not be, it may not be practical to assume that folks are going to drive 15 if we simply post the limit at that. You know, what we see is the environment is a much stronger predictor of driver choice and operating speed, and a lot of the things we've done, we feel out there that I took you through, we feel will induce some of that better driving behavior and slower speeds. But 15 may be lower than we can expect kind of the majority of the public to drive.
Okay, and then a follow up. Ryan, can you just clarify again, the 15, it's 15 miles per hour is the speed limit for the roundabout? It's recommended, but you can't be ticketed if you fly through the roundabout faster than that? Is that correct?
That's correct. So it was designed to deflect drivers as they go through and sort of naturally induce slower speeds. It's very hard to drive faster through a roundabout than that advisory speed, which is 15 miles per hour, but it's not illegal to do so. It's just, it just comes down to that behavioral influence of that infrastructure, and that's what we think, you know, what we see as the most effective way to slow people down as opposed to a posted speed limit.
Thank you. I would like to make the recommended motion to approve a resolution to establish a school speed zone, but I would like to make it 15 miles per hour on Phillips Street between Burton Street and Scott Street, and I'd like to speak to it when appropriate.
Okay, that sounds great. I'm going to go ahead and move through some additional questions first, if that's okay. So, Councilor Jordan?
Thank you. Just in doing some research for this agenda item, it appears that the city of Bozeman has a 24-hour day, seven day a week, 365 days a year, 15 mile per hour speed zone in school zones. And I'm just curious if we have explored that idea. It does seem like if Bozeman is doing it, they're probably an adherence to state law, and curious if that kind of a conversation has occurred either in Public Works or, I know that as far as enforcement goes, it would be tough because I know there's a lot of more high priority calls, but I'm just curious about this. I mean, Bozeman's just said, all day long, every day, school zones are 15 miles per hour, and it seems like that might clear up a lot of confusion for folks so that they know that it's not when children are present, or, you know, if it's a holiday, it's okay. I'm just curious if we've had any conversations in Public Works about Bozeman's approach to setting speed zones in school zones, speeds in school zones. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I was aware of Bozeman's ordinance. We did reference it in our Safe Speeds on City Streets white paper that supports the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. To my knowledge, while that may be the case in Bozeman, it is not technically legal, and I can provide the reference to the federal law that requires school zones to be posted on a fixed timeframe or with the when children are present condition. That comes from the manual and uniform traffic control devices from the US DOT. That's kind of like the highest level top-down traffic control rules that we're charged with following. It's not to say you can't put a 15 mile per hour, 24/7 speed zone in a school zone, it just may not stand up in court or under legal scrutiny.
Okay, a follow up?
I thank you for that, and I'm not trying to be challenging on purpose, but I'm just curious. So in Montana Code Annotated, there is a rule that says when local authorities may and shall alter limits or establish or alter area of school zones, there's a section that says that decreasing the limit in a school zone or in an area near a senior center as defined in a different part of the Montana Code Annotated, or a designated crosswalk that is close to a school or senior citizen center to not less than 15 miles per hour. So it sounds like in our own Montana Code Annotated, we do have the authority to set speed limits at 15 miles an hour if they meet some of the other conditions, including being near a school zone. So does it still seem like we could potentially be out of, like, be breaking the law if we try and set a 15 mile per hour speed zone?
No, I think it's within council's purview and authority to set a speed limit, a legal speed limit as low as 15 miles per hour. I think the question is just, and where our recommendation comes from, is just around compliance with that and the effectiveness of doing so. And if that, yeah, I'll leave it at that, I guess. But yeah, I certainly think that that is a legal speed limit to set for council in Montana.
Thank you for that. Okay, you bet. And Councilor Becerra, did you have something?
Just for clarification, that last Wednesday, we adjourned the meeting, but we did have a motion as presented by Ms. Farmer on the floor, is my recollection, unless someone, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we left the meeting with that, motion on the floor for a speed limit of 15 miles per hour.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification. So motion has been made, and we'll continue with questions for now, but that was how the motion was left on the floor at the committee. Thank you very much. So next, Councilor, Councilor Nelson, please.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Davis. Thanks to staff for the presentation, and also thanks for completing the Scott Phillips Roundabout. Congrats for all of that work. And yeah, I just want to say thanks to the Public Works Department for all the work that they've done to improve public safety in this corridor. My question is a follow up to the one that I asked in committee last week about monitoring. The term monitoring has come up a lot in this discussion, but it's still not clear to me exactly what that means and what possible outcomes of monitoring could look like. So maybe Jeremy or Ryan, could you describe what you are monitoring? Like, what are the indicators that you're monitoring? How is monitoring being conducted? What kind of information are you collecting? How is that information being used? And then what are the possible decisions that could be made if any of those indicators or standards are not being met or are being exceeded?
Yeah, thanks. So I guess, you know, really basically, some of the data we're monitoring or will continue to gather is the speed and volume data that we typically gather every year or every other year. So we plan on doing that, especially in light of the roundabout being opened, to sort of assess changes related to that. I'd also say we are planning to have some boots-on-the-ground observation, some of these pickup and drop off mornings, just to put some eyes on how things are working, see if we've missed anything, you know, when, at that kind of surface level. We'll continue to work with the school. We've got a kind of a good open communication channel right now to, you know, take their input and respond to issues that they're noticing, being there every day. We do work with PD closely as well to, you know, factor in with what they're seeing. Tyler Schwartz, the traffic sergeant, attends regularly our transportation safety team meetings, which occur bi-weekly, where we hear issues from citizens and council members and PD as well on safety issues that they're recognizing and we need to discuss. And then I guess that's kind of what we mean by monitoring. I think the outcomes you could anticipate, I guess, just thinking, you know, based on what we've done and some of the stuff that, you know, isn't maybe solidly set at this point, is, you know, is Hawthorne Street, you know, going to remain the priority crossing location? Do more users prefer using Shakespeare? You know, things like that could potentially, we could potentially pivot on and have the ability to do so relatively quickly if that needs identified. You know, we work with PD if enforcement is necessary, and we, you know, we collect some speed data and continue to see violations at unsafe speeds in excess of what we post this thing at, and things of that nature. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thanks, Ryan. I appreciate that. I guess what I'm getting at is, like, if conditions change, like, you've made these improvements and you're hoping that the public will abide by those things, and it's great that there will be boots on the ground, it's great that we're coordinated with PD and with the school, but I'm just wondering, like, if the changes in behavior we're seeking don't happen, how will we know that? And when will we make a change to say, okay, now we need to go down to 10 miles an hour, or we need more bulb outs? Is there a future plan for more improvements should monitoring yield the results that we don't want?
Good question. You know, I'd like to think that, yes, we could respond quickly if the issues persist or we, you know, we take note of some unforeseen result of posting the speed limit or lack of results for, maybe is a better way to put it. I think it also comes down to, you know, we can do as much engineering and, you know, kind of these circular, you know, improvements that are intended to have an effect but maybe don't have the desired effect or to the extent that we want them to. You know, I think it's those other E's, as Jeremy mentioned, the education and enforcement that become very important, right? Like, engineering is only going to get us so far. We only have so many resources we can throw at any given one issue in our city. We're doing our best to put as many as we can towards this issue on Phillips Street, which is warranted. But, you know, that's only one piece of the puzzle, so there are other aspects that may need to occur, and we are working on those with PD, with the school, hopefully with, you know, kind of that boots-on-the-ground, you know, continued reminders and encouragement to behave safely and drive safely through this area, that there are increased risks, and we've seen issues.
Okay. All right. And Councilor Becerra?
Thank you. I did have a chance to go and check out the new roundabout, and it's great. Looks really good. I did see some people having to slow down significantly as they were flying down the bridge, so that, I think it was timely to see that because I can, well, I'm no clairvoyant, I could imagine people having to slow down pretty hard as they get to the roundabout, and then if they're traveling west, they're still going to be traveling pretty fast or making up time for the time they lost navigating the roundabout, which is, I guess, I'm saying all of this to ask the question regarding speed. And for the most part, I want to say I'm always very supportive of all the work that Public Works does and all the engineers, you know, they are giving us an educated recommendation. However, I do have a question about how you arrived at the 20 miles per hour. Based on the study, it looks like you used an FHWA web tool, the US Limits 2. That, I believe that tool doesn't account for school zones. So what were the other factors that made you arrive at the conclusion that still 20 miles per hour, only five miles less than the posted speed, was the ideal speed for, speed limit for this zone?
Yeah, thanks for reading the study. I really appreciate that, for one. So that, yeah, you picked up on the U.S. Limits 2. That is a kind of an expert-based speed limit-setting tool that is used nationwide as sort of a gut check for a posted speed limit, but, yeah, it's stated right in that tool that it's not appropriate to post, to use that, you know, that tool may not, the recommendations garnered from it may not be appropriate for a school zone. That tool recommended a posted speed of 25 miles per hour for Phillips Street. So we did recommend a posted school speed limit lower than what that tool would have recommended. And I think going back to the Q and A, the reason we posted or are recommending a posting at 20 miles per hour is just, again, it's more consistent with the way we've done posted speeds in the past. We don't have a posted speed of 15 miles per hour or posted as low as 15 miles per hour in Missoula currently. We do have concerns that, you know, we're not actually going to see that type of behavior by simply posting the speed limit lower. What we do think, you know, posted speed's important, but environment is really a stronger determinant of the way drivers choose to operate their vehicles through any given area. So we're really focused on the improvements we made that support the posted speed limit reduction, but we recommended the 20 mile per hour posted speed simply for some better expectations from drivers with consistency, and the fact that sustaining 15 miles per hour as opposed to, or 15 mile per hour operating speeds through a posted speed limit is just typically considered impractical without really aggressive traffic calming and consistent enforcement, which can't always be there. So we felt 20 miles per hour struck a good balance.
Follow-up, please.
You mentioned that 20 miles per hour is consistent with what you would recommend in other places. Are you referring to other schools or just other streets that have the same classification as Phillips Street?
I'm referring to other schools and streets that are roughly similar to Phillips Street. Again, we don't have a fully fleshed-out school zone policy yet that would, you know, indicate what we would post everywhere if we could make those changes tomorrow. I do know we have a couple, you know, the lowest school zones we have posted in Missoula, to my knowledge, are Paxson at 20, and I do think there's another school posted at 20. I'm not remembering, but we don't have anything lower than that. All of our other schools are currently still posted at 25 miles per hour or higher on such as Reserve Street. So I, you know, I think when I say consistent, it's closer to the potential drop from the, you know, kind of legacy posted speed limit to the posted speed limits we have around town, typically in the 5 to 10 mile per hour range, and no lower than 20 miles per hour is currently what we have anywhere.
I have questions for Chief Collier, if that's okay?
Come on up.
I will make a public admission that I do drive above the speed limit, and I know a lot of people do, usually within five miles above the posted speed limit. So I'm saying all of this because the current speed limit right now on Phillips Street is 25, and if we're reducing to 20, I feel like people are just going to drive 25. So if we lower to 15, maybe we'll achieve the 20. My question is, is it more or less challenging to enforce 15 versus 20, 35, 45, and why?
I don't think it's any more challenging to enforce a lower speed limit. You probably have people exceeding the limit at a level that we would stop and take enforcement action. I mean, every officer uses a bit of discretion, you know, based on location, time, and date conditions and whatnot, as to whether they, A, even stop a violator that's slightly over, or if they stop and warn, or if they stop and cite them, you know, then we just allow them to have that discretion. So if it was at 15, I think you're probably going to have more people getting cited, you know, because they could potentially be much higher over the speed limit of 15 than if it's at 20, and so consequently, they may be just a little bit over the speed limit. It's all going to be very situationally dependent, and so I don't know if I could tell you that it would be any easier or more difficult for an officer if it's 15 or 25.
You would enforce it regardless? That's the posted speed limit, if people are speeding, going 5, 15, over the speed limit?
Yeah, so is the question if you're 5 over a 15 mile an hour zone, is that?
Or if you're in violation of the posted speed limit. That should be enough for, you know, enforcement of the speed, correct?
Sure. Like, you know, an officer may have a kind of a threshold of 10 miles an hour over. So if they're 25 and a 15, they'll probably get a ticket, you know, like, even if they were the same as if they were 35 and a 25.
Okay. And then my next question is, is it, can you explain again? Maybe you didn't, I missed it, but is it, is it more or less challenging, I'm just using that word for now, but to enforce when children present versus, say, 7 to 7 p.m.?
I think that could be more difficult, because like I said, and I'd have to figure out, how are we going to determine all of those elements? The first element being present. So what is the prosecutor's office going to want to determine as present? Does that mean they need to be adjacent to the vehicle that's speeding by on the sidewalk? Or does that mean they need to be within the line of sight? Can they be within the playground that has a fence around it? We would have to navigate through what kind of fact-specific circumstances they'd want to meet that element of present. Not to be too picky, but it says children, does that mean multiple? I mean, that's plural. Does one child qualify? I would assume it would, but again, we'd want to be conscientious about that. And the most subjective, what I think, is the age thing. With child, we'd have to come up with a definition of child or children that is going to be acceptable for this enforcement. And, you know, maybe there is some court decisions on that, you know, that could guide us through that. I just have never navigated through this thing. I'm just saying we'd have to do some research and be able to answer all those questions to give our people good direction on what elements we need to, you know, hit, check the box on before we can issue that citation.
So a set timeframe is?
Sure. The advantage of a set timeframe is it's either between that timeframe or it's not. The disadvantage is if you have an event at the school, or not even a sanctioned event, if you just have kids at the school outside of that designated timeframe, then it would remove, you know, it would remove that one element and go back to the default 25 mile an hour zone. So advantages and disadvantages to both. But we, you know, whatever the council comes up with, we can research it and come up with good guidance from our people and follow through with the enforcement side.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your questions, and Councilor Nugent?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions and apologies if this was already answered. I've been trying to follow everything. There was some reference to federal law, and so I guess my first question is, are there any federal highway designations around Lowell School?
No, Phillips is not a designated federal highway. Scott Street is a federal urban aid route, so there is that element, but no, Phillips is completely within our local jurisdiction.
So would the reference to federal law on school zones or whatever the reference was on controlling the speed limit only be applicable on Scott Street? Or how would it be applicable on streets that aren't federally designated routes?
That's a great question. All streets, regardless of being federal aid, urban aid eligible, still fall under the purview of the U.S. DOT's manual and uniform traffic control devices. We can modify that, but we can't go with lesser standards than what that document says. That document was recently updated in 2023, and it's kind of like the, it's kind of like the traffic engineering framework for traffic control devices and what's legally enforceable and what's allowed to be used as traffic control devices for everything from a dirt local street that's a public right-of-way to, yeah, interstates and highways.
Okay, one more. You referenced working with Lowell on the intersection, the preferred intersection, that it's going to be marked and that's where you want kids to cross. I've heard that explanation, asking about complaints received from constituents in schools in my ward, and just dropping off kids at school, my observation is, kids care very little about what traffic engineers think about preferred intersections. So I guess, how do we monitor that? Because at some point, like, I understand, in a perfect world, we can direct people to use specific intersections, but in a world where the targeted demographic is just going to take the path of least resistance, how do we monitor for that?
Yeah, that's a good question. So I did mention, Public Works staff is coordinating some morning observation times to really, you know, see for ourselves how things are working, which crosswalks are being used, and just kind of, you know, taking note of, kind of qualitatively, right, what's going on around behaviors related to crossing the street. We landed on Hawthorne at the recommendation of the Lowell principle, as that being the location that gets the most use on Phillips. So not to say that, you know, Shakespeare isn't a, you know, a good candidate for further enhancement, but, you know, we really do reserve the priority, and I mean, when I say that, I mean the flashing beacons for one of those locations, because they're just in too close a proximity for that to be a good call to put two flashing beacons up at that close together. Yeah, and I mentioned, you know, we'll continue to monitor that, hear from the school, you know, inquire, you know, directly with them how things are going as the school year continues to go on, and we have the flexibility to change course and move that. I did mention, we, you know, we didn't just leave Shakespeare out of the whole calculus. It did get refreshed with brand-new, high-visibility, epoxy retro-reflective pavement markings. It's signed with fluorescent yellow-green crosswalk marking signs. I mean, all of these crossings adjacent to Lowell are enhanced. It's just, I guess we're talking about which one gets the RFB, and currently, it's deployed at Hawthorne, and we have the ability to change course on that in the future if we hear from folks that Shakespeare's a better, or observe for ourselves that Shakespeare's, you know, getting more use and warrants that type of an enhancement in lieu of it at Hawthorne.
Thanks for the record. Anybody who's heard me talk about traffic management, when he's referring to flashing beacons, I call them flashy blinkies, so it's just easier for me to remember. You mentioned Public Works staff being out and observing. This is something I've talked to Chairwoman Becerra about, but I'd be interested in that sort of observation happening in all of our schools, because especially as we get later in the fall and then winter when it's dark earlier, I just think there are some more areas that's a broader conversation, regardless of how this vote goes tonight, that I feel we need to have. And I understand there's a workload issue, but traffic conversations around schools are one of the most frustrating constituent complaints, because it feels like very rarely does the answer we get to give them satisfactorily. So I just think that that's something that I have an appetite to study a bit more.
Okay, noted. Thank you, Councilor Nugent. Councilor Becerra?
Thank you. I withdrew my amendment to the motion to revert back to the 20 miles an hour, which was recommended by staff, due to the sake of time during our committee meeting. I would like to put that back on the floor when the appropriate time is here. I can't remember if we're supposed to do that during comments or during questions.
The motion is on the floor, and thank you for the procedural question. And we generally follow a similar, but not totally, process here at public hearings under regular business. We are under regular business. So we're in questions from council now on the motion, because it already came onto the floor. It would be an appropriate time, and now. And then we'll hear public comment, and then I'll, because we haven't heard public comment on this specific agenda item, and then I'll bring it back to council for comments. Before you make that motion, if I could, I would like to have City Attorney Ryan Sudbury speak to a nexus here between the required traffic study and the state law. Since that was brought up earlier, I think it could be helpful in the conversation, if that's okay?
Absolutely. Let me know whenever the time is right. Thanks.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mr. Sudbury?
Yes, thank you, Ryan Sudbury with the City Attorney's Office. One note that I wanted to make sure people were aware of, and in terms of my concern on this issue, is the traffic engineering study put forward by Public Works appears to have concluded that 20 miles an hour is the recommended speed, and the state law requirement for this provision requires a traffic and engineering study to conclude that it's warranted? And I'm concerned that, you know, it doesn't say, unlike some other provisions of state law, that council has the complete discretion to make its decision on this. So my recommendation to council, if it's interested in pursuing something lower than the recommended speed limit based on the traffic and engineering study, is to send this back to staff to incorporate or investigate whether there are elements that could be incorporated in the traffic and engineering study, or whether there's justification based on a traffic and engineering study to recommend or conclude that 15 miles an hour would be the adequate speed limit, or the recommended speed limit in this area. So my concern is less on that federal law, state law issue, as much as state law only authorizes down to 15 if it's recommended by a traffic and engineering study, and it doesn't sound like we have that case here. So if council wants a, you know, fully enforceable speed limit based on state law, it needs a traffic and engineering study to conclude that that's the speed limits that's warranted under the circumstances.
Okay. I see that, Councilor Jordan, you have your hand up, and so rather than do another round of questions for Ryan Sudbury, he's available, but an amendment has been proposed on the floor, so I'm going to allow that to come to the floor, and we can speak to that amendment, which I believe that your question's probably relative to that anyway. Okay, all right. Well, let's go ahead and hear Councilor Becerra's amendment, please.
Yeah, I would like to amend reverting back to the original motion to the 20 miles an hour. I guess I'll speak to that when the time is right, unless the time is right now.
The time is right.
Okay. Just because I'm not an expert, and I do just want to put this to a vote for the 20 miles an hour versus 15 miles an hour, I do not take this decision very lightly. One of my friend's kids was one of the kids that got hit in this area, and I have children myself, so this is not, like I said, I'm not taking this decision lightly. I just think that we should revert to the experts, and we are being very, I guess we're being told to be cautious about going lower than what the recommendation was, so I just want to adhere to that, and I won't take it personally if my amendment doesn't pass.
Okay, thank you. So we do have an amendment on the floor, and so we'll go ahead and hear that now, unless you have a friendly amendment to the amendment before we take public comment on this, and then take a vote on the amendment. Does that all make sense?
It's probably not a friendly amendment. I want to move to keep it in committee so that we can do a deeper dive and potentially see if we might not just make this a blanket school zone speed limit rather than spot-area speed limit. So I guess the idea would be keep it in committee, send it back to staff, and see if we can do maybe more of a blanket approach. So I'm not really sure where that fits into the whole.
Me either. Thank you. Let's ask the attorney. City Attorney Sudbury, what do you think? What's our next move here?
Yeah, well, I mean, you have a motion on the floor that I think would need to be dealt with before dealing with a motion to send to committee, although frankly, Councilor Anderson is usually the parliamentarian here. I would say on that point, though, it relates back to my last point. We would need an engineering and traffic study to We would need a engineering and traffic study to analyze each school zone to conclude that it's warranted in that location. There's not, the discretion is just to say we want it to be 15 miles an hour. I think that's, without an engineering and traffic study concluding that, the enforcement of that would be in jeopardy.
Okay. Thank you for that, Mr. Sudbury. I also, I just want to remind us that school starts tomorrow, so I am going to come back to you, Counselor Basica. It's your prerogative if you'd like to draw this, withdraw your amendment, or if you'd like to proceed with the amendment.
No, school's starting soon. We can always go back to this at a later date.
So we'll move forward with the vote on the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Before we do that, I'll go ahead and ask the, any public that are present, if you wish to make public comment on this agenda item, please. Come on up, say your name in three minutes, please.
Big K Montana, and it's not Big K Montana, Spitzmacher, Big K Montana. I come here to Montana when I seen 20 mile an hour speed limit in the school zone. Whoa, they like speeders in the school zone, Wisconsin. 15 miles in all school zones. I think Salt Lake City is 15 miles in school zones when present, children are present. I will emphasize, when children are present at a crosswalk, instead of a fenced-in park, like it's over there by Hawthorne, and when children are on the sidewalk, do they participate like the children at 1110 Broadway and just dart across the street? That's where we meet 15 miles an hour. Do the children dart across the street in a skewed zone other than a crosswalk? And I would emphasize, when children are at a crosswalk, that's a school zone of 15 miles an hour.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Spitzmacher. Next public comment, come on up.
Hi, my name's Nicole Gueye, and I'm a Lowell parent. I had some remarks prepared tonight, but I feel like I need to address some things that came up, so if I jump around, I apologize. I want to first thank the council for tabling this last, this last week, so that this could be reviewed further, and I want to thank council members Farmer and Basera for your interest, and also Councilmember Melson, just for being constant contact this summer and helping me kind of wade through all of this. It's really meant a lot to me. At the end of the school year last year, my daughter Finley was hit. I talked about that at length at the last meeting. I don't think I need to again. She has been traumatized by this event, and it's not the same. The crosswalk at Shakespeare remains unsafe, and while some measures have been implemented to approve Hawthorne and Scott Street, they do come close to addressing the core danger that Shakespeare. I can tell you right now that Hawthorne is not the preferred crossing, and not making any improvements to Shakespeare with no plan on how we're going to funnel kindergarten to fifth graders through a preferred crossing is just asking for disaster. There's simple things we can do to increase safety, and that's put permanent flashing lights at the Shakespeare crossing, where we already know the children cross most. Reducing the speed limit to 15 miles per hour, and then the proper signage along Philip Street. It's, I mean, there's not even school signage from, when you're coming from the Russell Way. I really cannot understand the resistance of the Department of Public Works to these measures, especially the flashing lights being permanent and the 15 miles per hour speed zone. I've heard them say tonight that enforcement is the biggest part of this, and then I heard the chief of police say that 15 miles when children are present is hard to enforce. So I feel like it's not an answer. They're not, it's not an answer, and, you know, this is not about an over-emotional mother of a child that was hit or overreacting community. This is our children. These are their lives. I mean, my daughter was lucky. She didn't get hit lightly. She was lucky to walk away, and, you know, most of the kids there were. I just want to say that when we recognize a danger to our children and we choose not to act, then we are acting negligently. This is not about Finley, it's about all the Lowell students and who depend on us to keep them safe. Teachers, students, and families see the risk every day, and the fear it causes our children is real and preventable. I urge you to act now, and marginal difference could make all the difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gray, and I'm very sorry to hear about your daughter Finley. Glad to hear that she's doing well. All right. Anybody else wishing to make public comment here in the audience this evening? All right, not seeing any other folks in the room, and I just want to remind us that we are speaking to the amendment specifically, and if there's anything that you have there in the amended motion, would be to approve a resolution to establish a school speed zone of 20 miles per hour. Okay, I'm not seeing any other members of the public online wishing to speak to this. All right. Okay, so we have the amended motion. I see that we've got four council members' hands up, so we'll bring it back to council comments before we take a vote on the amended motion. And Counselor Basera?
I have a clarification question from Brian, if that's okay?
Please, of course, you bet.
Ryan Sudbury, are you, help me get clear on this. Are you saying that we don't have the ability to go against, if you will, or have a motion that sets the speed limit at lower than what staff recommends, because there's a study associated with it?
Well, it, you know, it doesn't, the language of the state statute's not worded in that fashion, so it doesn't say, city council cannot pass a speed limit that is below the council recommendation. It doesn't say that expressly. What it says is, you know, there is a minimum speed limit in urban areas set by state law at 25 miles an hour, and it sets a process by which local jurisdictions can reduce that speed limit, where a traffic and engineering study recommends or concludes that a lower speed based on the circumstance present is warranted. So, you know, my conclusion from that language is that if we want an enforceable speed limit set below 25 miles an hour, we need to have a traffic and engineering study make that conclusion. And so, you know, if council, council adopted something lower than the recommended speed limit, we would be open to a challenge to a ticket issued based on a 15 violation of a 15 mile an hour speed limit, that that speed limit was set in violation of the process laid out in state law. So the safest, sort of the most conservative course would be to reinvestigate the speed limit around Lowell School, to focus closely on whether or not circumstances exist that would warrant a 15 mile an hour speed limit. And, you know, if we had that in hand, and then council voted to lower it based on that recommended speed limit, then we'd be, you know, from my perspective, it would be fully enforceable. Something short of that would, again, it would be open to challenge to the process that set the lower speed.
So, so city council has the ability to direct staff to conduct a study with the intent to lower the speed limit, but city council does not have the ability to set what that speed limit should be? Is that right?
So again, it doesn't prohibit city council from doing something. I mean, I know this, it sounds like I'm parsing my language a little too closely, but I don't want you to say that I'm telling you that state law prohibits you from doing something absent someone else. The issue is whether or not it would be enforceable without a traffic and engineering study. And yes, you are very much within your authority to direct staff, and you could say so as much as city council is interested in protecting the health and safety of children in school zones and believes from its experience that 15 miles an hour is warranted, and direct staff to investigate the circumstances at that location to determine whether a traffic and engineering study would conclude the same thing.
And what if it doesn't? I mean, that's what we have before us today.
Then, as I said, I, it would leave the ticket or citation based on a 15 mile an hour speed limit open to challenge. Now, it would require somebody to sort of understand and realize that this was an issue, and challenge it in, you know, a municipal court enforcement proceeding, and, you know, a lot of people, even if this was a, you know, became a big issue, probably still wouldn't know about that, and you may get the benefit of people just seeing the sign and having voluntary compliance. So that's why I'm not trying to say you guys are, you're prohibited from taking action on this, but absent an engineering and traffic study that concludes that 15 miles an hour is warranted in this location, the enforceability, you know, we wouldn't be standing on that 100% certain grounds, and we could enforce it.
Thank you.
Absolutely, you bet. Thanks for your questions. And Counselor Carlino?
Thanks. Yeah, I definitely support the lowering it down to 15 miles per hour for the school zone, and I think for all school zones in town, we should do that, similar to Bozeman. You know, driving has just become so dangerous, and most of our streets aren't designed to get people to, from point A to B, in the safest manner. They're, that's competing interests with people being able to go faster, so I think we need to start designing our streets to be as safe as possible, not, you know, not catering to people driving faster. And I think this is just one small example. I think the 15 mile per hour speed limit should also be, also have, you know, other things to calm traffic to go along with it, but if we're going to be choosing between people driving a little bit faster and, or driving a little bit slower and adding safety, I think we ought to go with the 15 mile per hour zone in all school zones, so definitely support that here.
Okay, thank you for your comment, Counselor Carlino. Counselor Farmer?
Thanks. So I just wanted to kind of talk about a little bit about why I have recommended 15 over 20, and the first reason is, I think that the data in the traffic study, while I'm not questioning how accurate it is, I do think that logic dictates a little bit here. You know, I've lived in the West Side for over 30 years, I've lived in this neighborhood for the last 13 years, and I can confidently say, in the last year, traffic has gone up exponentially with all the development on the North Side and all the development that is coming on the North Side. So you can logically say that if we were to go back and do an additional traffic study, it would likely come back and tell us 15 miles per hour is the right speed limit. The other reason I think that a lower speed limit makes sense in this area is that I think you can also, if you were to pull up right now Philip Street on Google Maps, you will look and you will see that there are cars backed up to the point where streets do not have adequate sightings. So I think we can confidently say that this is one of those unique streets where there is not adequate sighting. 15 miles per hour makes sense here. I think also, the third reason that I suggest 15 miles per hour is that if you look at the roundabout, that's already going to be 15 miles per hour, that is also a logical speed limit to continue going after you exit out of the roundabout. We're going to have a hard time getting people going 15 miles per hour as they're venturing down Scott Street Hill, so to me, 15 miles an hour makes more sense. And I also, you know, I hear what people are saying about, you know, we shouldn't make decisions with emotions, but to me, this is a logical decision. We have had three children be hit in this neighborhood. That is not an emotional decision, that's a logical thing that we can see with our eyes, that children are being hit. This is not safe. I was present when one of the children was hit in the park, as were dozens of my neighbors, all being children. That was an emotional experience, to watch a child be dragged under a car. But this is not emotional, this is logical. These are children. This is not, we're not talking about whether it's, whether it's the neighborhood can or can't go that speed, we're talking about children's lives. And I hear what Ryan's saying about whether, you know, we should do another traffic study, and I, to me, I would rather err on the side of potentially being litigated than having a child die. So I'm willing to take that risk. I hope my colleagues will join me in voting for that. I think I want to remind everyone that this has been going on for several years, and this neighborhood has been extremely patient in waiting for a response from us. The timing is now, in conjunction with the roundabout being open, if we wait and send it back and we do a whole citywide study, it's going to be 25 miles an hour there. So the timing is not to hem and haw right now, the timing is make a decision. If we want to, in the future, do something citywide, that's great, but right now, this neighborhood has been waiting for three years for us to make a decision. So please, let's make a decision.
Thank you, Counselor Farmer. And Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, look, I agree 100% with what Ms. Farmer just said. I think this is a really interesting moment where us as representatives are really trying hard to convince staff that what our voters want is something different than what staff are recommending, and I, that's where I find my job as a city councilor and a representative critical, because that is our job. We are hearing from parents and residents of this area that 20 miles an hour is not good enough, and they want it to be lower, and I think, I can't imagine seeing a child getting hit by a car. I just really agree with what Ms. Farmer said. I would rather err on the side of litigation than see another child get hurt and a whole group of people be traumatized. I, this is us as representatives asking city staff to please consider what voters are asking us to do for them. This, I'm really in support of this being 15 miles an hour, and appreciate the nod to potentially reviewing all speed zones around schools and seeing if they need to have their speed limits lowered as well. It's just really important that we not do what we've always done, and really look at this particular issue separately, given all of the data that we have, based on how unsafe it is and how congested it's getting, and I fully support having a 15 mile an hour speed limit here, so definite yes for me. And again, I'd like to see a review of all school zones and see if perhaps we need to lower those speeds elsewhere in town as well.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Jordan. And Counselor Nugent?
Thank you, Mayor Davis. I'm just going to kind of comment in general, I'm going to be voting no on the amendment to bring it back to 20, and although yes on 15, first of all, I think if somebody gets a traffic ticket in the school zone for speeding over 15 miles an hour and wants to litigate it, I mean, we should be willing to fight that, and I think that if there are multiple cities in Montana, Bozeman's one, I believe Cowspole's another, that have school zones that are 15 miles an hour in the whole city, I don't think that that would be a very difficult case to win. But I also think it'd be likely that if somebody is caught speeding in a school zone where it's 15, they're probably going to be going over 20 anyways, so that could be cited as space. I think that we should do the right thing, and I appreciate Ms. Jordan's comments quite a bit, because I do think there are times where, I know it's frustrating to be staff that works for an elected body, well, I guess they work for the mayor, lucky you, but it's probably frustrating to have different directions coming, but we are definitely responsible for being, you know, responsive to our constituents, and I don't believe that this is a bad thing. I mean, I could tell you that my study for my vote tonight is that I've driven the neighborhood, and the streets are narrow. When things are going on at Lowell School or the park next to it, and there are cars everywhere, it is tough to see, and I think that 15 miles an hour in that scenario is perfectly reasonable. I would like to have a separate conversation, like I said, about a broader school zone policy in the city, and I think that based on the comments around the horseshoe tonight, that we will see that in short order, but I will, like I said, I'll be supportive of the 15 miles an hour, I'll be voting down the amendment, and I don't have any fear that we don't have the authority to do this.
Thank you, Counselor Nugent. And, who was your rat, Counselor Savage?
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with a lot of what my colleagues have said. I will also be voting no on the 20 mile per hour amendment, and voting yes on the 15 mile per hour speed limit. When the roundabout opened on Friday, I got a text from the principal of Lowell, who said, "You should come down here, because you should see how fast people are going around this roundabout." And so even though I know it encourages people to go 15 miles an hour, that's not what she was seeing, and I think that she was clocking speeds. was seeing, and I think that she was clocking speeds in the 30 miles per hour. And I jokingly say that, you know, no roundabout has quite met the North Side, West Side. We're known as being a feisty, feisty neighborhood, and I'm not sure that even if, you know, that is suggested speed, that that is what people will go. People are used to flying down the Scott Street Bridge on both sides. That's why this neighborhood has been asking for years for something to slow traffic on the particularly on the west side of the bridge. I think, too, there is, you know, I appreciate the traffic studies. I really appreciate all the time and effort that went into that. But we have three children that were hit in one school year, and I don't need any more traffic studies personally. We don't have that at other elementary schools in Missoula, but we have it here at Lowell. So I think for me, I will be voting for the 15 miles per hour, and I agree with Mr. Nugent. You know, I think that Bozeman has 15 mile per hour school zones, Caliswell does. I'm curious if they had to do traffic studies on every single street surrounding schools to get those done. I doubt seriously they did. So I think we can probably feel secure in our ability to change this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Savage. And Counselor Becerra?
I have an amendment to the main motion, so I think I'll just wait because we need to dispense with the amendment put forward by Ms. Becerra.
So that's great.
So I'll lower my hand.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. And Counselor Becerra?
Thanks. I just wanted to close real quick. I do agree with all of my colleagues. This is a very serious issue. I also take my role as an elected official very seriously in the way that we need to follow all protocols, all rules. We have to make sure that we're doing things under our authority. Other folks, I know I disagree with some of this. I'm I don't take litigation very night very lightly either. So I just want to do my due diligence to ensure that we are adhering to our authority. So that's my last, my final pitch on that one.
Okay. Thank you very much, Counselor Becerra. And I do believe that that wraps up our council comments, and we can do a roll call vote on the amendment that is on the floor. Yes.
Sounds good. All right, so this is Ms. Becerra's amendment to the main motion to revert back to the public works recommended in 20 miles per per hour in this zone. Beginning with Jordan.
No.
Nelson?
No.
Nugent?
No.
Savage?
No.
Cheryl?
No.
Sika?
Yes.
Becerra?
No.
Carlino?
No.
Farmer?
No.
Jones?
No.
My motion has nine opposed, one in favor, so that fails.
Okay. Thank you all very much. So we have dispensed of that amendment. And Counselor Becerra, I'll start with you because I understand you have an amendment to the main motion that's on the floor.
Yes, I would like to move that we or amend the the motion so that it is not when children present, but rather from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And this I'm I'm saying 7:00 p.m. because I think that by then, many school activities are done with, but certainly open to this being further into the night if I can get some other council members to weigh in or the parents. But I think that having a definite timeframe for when the speed limit applies is, you know, more likely to be enforced, and it's it takes away a lot of the ambiguity of of just decide making a decision, whether it's by eyesight or by someone to determine whether there is there's a child or children present. So my motion is to set a specific timeframe for the speed limit.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So motion is on the floor to amend from when children are present to 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. We'll hear either questions or comments from council members now, and and I will open it up to public comment as well on this particular item. Counselor Jordan?
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with Ms. Becerra in saying that having a timeframe is is going to be easier for folks to adhere to. I think that we could notch it up a level and say that the speed limit is applicable 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, because I don't go to that part of town very much, honestly, because I live over in Franklinth Fort, and I go to Franklin Park all the time. And Franklin Park is full of people from sunrise to sunset. And it is a very different part of town that's not as congested as Lowell School, but I know Lowell School's also a community play area, and I would rather see it be something that's just always applicable. So 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. would work great in the winter, I think. In the summertime, you're going to have people there until the sun sets. And and I know the idea is to just get a timeframe on it, but I would like to see it just be all the time so that there is never any confusion about when it's applicable. And I'm not really sure if that would be a friendly amendment or if we what we want to do with this.
Counselor Becerra?
I'm happy to entertain a a ti- an ending time that's higher than 7:00 p.m. But I think that it's, to me, it seems unrealistic that it can be enforceable 24/7. So I just want to make sure that we are putting something in place that can actually be enforced. And so 24 hours seems like might not get us that, but certainly something in between.
Counselor Jordan?
I'm wondering, is it like a city park that has opening and closing hours?
Can you do sunrise to sunset?
Yeah.
How do we feel about that? I'll look to both Chief Collier and/or folks from our public works. I don't know if I've ever seen that on a traffic sign. Chief Collier, why don't you come on up and and address that concept?
Thank you. I was hoping the engineers would go first because I don't I don't think I know the answer. I don't think that that would be within what the M U T D C recommends. I think that their verbiage calls out for beginning and ending times.
Okay.
So I would defer to Jeremy.
Okay, thank you. And Ryan or Jeremy, do you have anything to add to what Chief Collier provided there?
Yeah, I'd echo Chief Collier's statement. The M U T C D, it it has the the timeframes or when flashing is allowable as well if it's got the flashing beacons that go off during set timeframes or it's the when children are present. So I think whatever timeframe you choose is it needs to have some distinct times as opposed to something that would be harder to enforce, like a variable sunrise and sunset.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's helpful. Certainly interesting to consider, but understandable. Counselor Jordan?
Just looking at Missoula City Park hours, 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And, you know, that's something that's across the board that could be applicable to a school area that's also used as a park. I'm wondering if perhaps park hours might be a friendly amendment to your proposal, Ms. Becerra?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Friendly amendment has been accepted, so the amendment for the 15 mile an hour speed zone includes 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Thank you for that. Okay. All right. And Counselor Nugent?
Counselor Jordan did all the work, so I don't have.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much. And Counselor Becerra?
I was going to ask the Chief Collier's opinion, but yeah, Jordan did all the work.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then lastly, Counselor Farmer?
Thanks. I was just going to ask, can I would take that as a friendly amendment to my original motion, so we can vote on it once if that.
Fantastic. Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much, Counselor Farmer. And Counselor Jones?
I can't raise my hand. And I just wanted.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know. I think I joined the meeting wrong. It's all right. I just wanted to say that this is where I wanted to see it go, and I'm in support of this. I think it should be definite times, and I think I like the the lengthened hours, I think, is great for both summer and winter. And I think 15 miles per hour is is it's a good place to have this, given all of the context surrounding it. And if we have to battle it in court, this is the I I'm not that worried about that. It can always be changed in the future if we are totally proven wrong, but I I think we're planning it's right place.
Okay. Thank you very much. And any other members of council, either questions or comments in regards to the to the motion that's on the floor, which has been successfully amended? Counselor Becerra?
I just want to say thank you to staff. I know that it looks and seems like we are not following all the recommendations that you have put forward, but I do appreciate the work that went into giving us the study and and something to think about and to work from. So I I truly appreciate that. And I also want to say thank you to the neighborhood members who are here. I appreciate your giving us your perspective and your experience. I used to live in the West Side on Phillips, across the street from the school, and I'm keenly aware of how challenging that intersection is. Many I unfortunately, I had to witness way too many near misses and a couple of hits. This is an issue that's been going on for decades. So it feels really momentous to have concrete, literally concrete, measures that are going to provide some safety net for our kiddos. So thanks.
All right, yes, thank you for your comments. And one last call. Any questions or comments from council members? I I know we've heard from the public, but I certainly would invite members of the public to come up and provide additional public comment on this before council takes vote. Yep, okay. All right. Well, thank you. And I, too, appreciate the diligence in 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 the conversation and look forward to ongoing evaluation, both here and in other another school districts. Sounds like we need to come up with something creative for the center of that roundabout to encourage further reductions in speed. Okay, so I'll just repeat we what the resolution, excuse me, what the recommended motion is, which is to approve a resolution to establish a school speed zone of 15 miles per hour during the hours of 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on Phillips Street between Burton Street and Scott Street. All right, great. And so that motion is ready for a roll call vote. Ms. Trimble?
All right, doing a roll call, and the motion is read by the mayor, beginning with Nelson.
Absolutely.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Becerra?
Yes.
Becerra?
Yes.
Carlino?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Jordan?
Yes.
And that motion passes, ten in favor, none opposed.
Okay, thank you very much. And I want to thank the members of the public for coming down, not only tonight, but at committee meetings and then for your ongoing communication throughout this process. I also want to thank city staff for the hard work that it is. The valley in Missoula has a lot of different obstacles that we have to move around, and traffic is an interesting and ongoing project. And so I just want to thank the work of our city staff and our continued work together. I hope kids have a great first day of school tomorrow. All right, and thank you all so much. That wraps up that agenda item, and congratulations to all folks folks on the North Side. Thanks, Chief, for coming down tonight. Appreciate you having here. Okay. That wraps up regular business. And so with that, we're at our public comment on non-agenda items. Anybody from the public wishing to address the council's not on non-agenda items, come on up.
Big K Montana had a illness coming on that's brought on, I would say, March 16th, that is specifying the vigilance in this building that does not remember it. I remember it frame for frame how they advocated the problems that evolved. What took this into the dynamics that is is the advocacy of individuals out there that are promoting what I have a problem with of society and the human race of being threatened. And one of them specifically is an individual regarding Tyler Little Dog that's presently in Great Falls. She's spreading the gospel of chomanism and so forth. I do fear the fact that, as I was threatened in Salt Lake City, nobody heard it, but the emails heard it and so forth, and we don't give a you-know-what. If I would happen to become the martyr of the legend of Missoula that may could possibly happen, I do think it's slightly slim. But the fact of the matter, that's a disease, that ramifications that I think Donald Trump, the new sheriff in town that I heard on one of the presentations on Front Line is to the fact that how he's cleaning up the D.C., but I think he's overexaggerating on his presentation that I had been listening to. We should heed to what he's doing throughout the country and the problems that the neighborhood would say. Like I said, somebody that I speculated and so forth, the people can go out and walk their dogs in Washington, D.C. with the presence of safety. Now, where is my safety in regards if I happen to be in the wrong neighborhood and there is one person that I suspect is advocating the misknown that as Tyler Little Dog.
Mr. Spitzmacher, I'm going to call you right there. That is against the decorum of city council to be talking about members of the public impugning the their actions. So if you wish to talk about people's actions, you're welcome to do that, but please do not use their names. Thank you.
He's caught on the federal cameras on the mountain lion bus that I'm a chomo pedophile Santa Claus. I would love the Marvel group that Stephen King with Steven Spielberg to put out chomo Santa Claus with a meat hook to adorn the Christmas tree that advocates the fact of the matter that the problem exists in Missoula and Salt Lake City, like a disease to be enjoyed for Christmas Eve.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Spitzmacher. And any other members of the public in the audience wishing to make comment on items not on the agenda? Okay, I'm not seeing any. I do see one hand raised online. Kyla Tripp, when you're ready, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hey, I just wanted to address the the city council. Thank you for listening to this, but I'm just looking to see more so, looking for transparency on how police resources are being used in neighborhoods, specifically in the 44 Ranch neighborhood. We have had multiple instances of tickets being written at 9:00 o'clock in the morning for parking in yellow lines. Our house has been a victim of nine parking tickets issued at 9:45 on a Saturday morning. And there is a daycare drop off center that has been getting calls, and those daycare drop offs have been issuing citations. This is done in response to calls to the police. The police do respond. They are officers. They are not just city workers, and they issue the tickets. So I am wondering if there's a better use of resources or if you guys have some sort of like, if you can provide transparency on how those calls should be taken and what order, because it seems like we have, you know, problem speeding and and young children getting hurt right around that time of the morning to where we don't need them policing a residential neighborhood for people parked on a yellow curb where no one's walking in the morning. I'm just, I I would just like that to be out there, to know that our resources are maybe not being well allocated, and that might help with some of the issues that we've been talking about on this meeting now.
Okay, Ms. Tripp, thank you. And I might suggest that if you're able to hop on to the city of Missoula's website, go to the city council, contact us, city council page, you could put your You could put your contact information, you could email the full city council or your Ward Two representative specifically. And they could follow up with some of your questions that you asked tonight.
Okay, I will do that.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. All right. Any other members of the public wishing to make public comment on items not on the agenda? All right, I'm not seeing any hands raised. That wraps up our public comment on items not on the agenda. Thank you. It's been a long evening. I did just want to make out, just make a couple of comments. In particular, we have our Fire Chief Lonnie Rash here this evening and our Assistant Fire Chief John Petroff. I wanted to thank you and the Missoula Fire Department for your very quick response on Friday afternoon to a brush fire that took place around 1:00 p.m. on both sides of Interstate 90. I was able to enjoy an event that evening for the 30th anniversary of the Carousel of Missoula because of your quick work. And Chief Collier left, and I know, of course, our law enforcement helps secure traffic and we had to make some very quick action there in order for our first responders to be able to act like they did. And of course, this is what inter-agency and what I learned later is even inter-business. So Brett's RV has water trucks and they jumped on it immediately. And then, of course, our Missoula Fire Department and the Missoula Rural Fire Department. Appreciate everybody's quick response. Excellent job. It was quite a scene to be in the showroom of Brett's RV on Friday evening at the Missoula Carousel event and see the charred grass. But no charred RVs. So well done. Well done to that. Thank you. Friday was busy. We started our day in the morning celebrating the grand opening of a new trail at the Bluebird Trailhead. So this is in Ward Two. Counselor Basara was able to also be in attendance. And that is something that is in partnership with Republic Services and Five Valleys Land Trust. So we were able to secure an access easement and a conservation easement on property owned by Republic Services. This adds an initial two and a half acre walking trail system managed by the Missoula, City of Missoula Parks and Rec staff. So our team went in and built these trails and we'll, we'll manage those. And this will be open seasonally just like they are on Mount Jumbo, but they're open now. So if you have a chance to head up there, it's, it's a really beautiful spot. And then lastly, I'd say congratulations to our public library that after many years, the DNA Playground was open. And if you have not had a chance to go, this is a very interesting location. This was made possible by a Science Education Partnership Award. The DNA Playground is an interactive health sciences exhibit exploring, exploring human anatomy, the building blocks of life, the DNA of place and indigenous culture. I must say that we were there for a dedication ceremony and you really couldn't hear any of us, which was good because mostly all you could hear were the squeals of children having such a good time. And so the fact that they're interacting with so many learning opportunities while having such a great time, it was fabulous. So if you haven't had a chance to go down there, adults can play there too. Check it out. It's really cool. All right. That is just some things I wanted to call out and recognize some really cool things happening in our community. And with that, I'll turn it over to council comments to see what council members may wish to share. Counselor Basika?
Thanks. I'll try to be brief. The first thing I wanted to let folks know about, I got received from constituents about some actions that happened at the fair regarding private property. I don't care if you disagree or agree with other folks, but destroying private property is not only illegal, but it's, it's mean. So there was a lot of destruction at some of the booths, particularly from one side of the aisle, the Republican booth. There was a lot of destruction, some cutouts that were torn apart and other acts of vandalism. And I just want folks to know that we can, we can all agree, disagree, but destroying of other people's property is, is not okay. And on a lighter note, we do have next week off and in the way that I always do, we have next week off because of Labor Day and it first became a national holiday in 1894 under President Grover Cleveland. And it is to celebrate the contributions of workers and a tribute born from the labor movement's fight for better working conditions, fair, fair wages and reasonable hours during the late 19th century. And if you're wondering, can I wear white after Labor Day? Well, it is an outdated social and fashion tradition originating from the late 19th and early 20th centuries where wealthy Americans wore white as vacation wear and then stored it for the colder city seasons, signaling an end to their leisurely summer activities. So if you are not done with your leisurely summer activities, I suggest continue wearing white. Thank you.
Counselor Basika, thank you not only for the multiple layers of information. That was awesome. Thank you. I appreciate that. Good. I don't want to finish wearing my, my whites. Thank you. Counselor Jones?
Thanks. So I thought it was a really good discussion around speed limits tonight. It's really timely because we are heading into the very end of summer. We're coming up on Labor Day. Still a lot of tourists in town and in western Montana and a lot of people heading out of town for the week, three-day weekend coming up. So folks need to be careful driving. Earlier today, there was a seven-car pileup outside of Whitefish, heading into Whitefish. I believe there was one person who was injured, but seven cars, and this is in Montana. Sunday, I was coming back down from the Flathead and it was all backed up in Ronan. We pulled off and had to get some gas and then we took the back roads to get around all the congestion. And I don't know if it's true or not, but I'm sure there's a grain of truth in it. The clerk told me that there was a bad accident with someone going, she said, 120 miles per hour. I'm sure it was very, very fast in Ronan, hit someone coming out of a bank. There were several ambulances there. Anyway, traffic is an ongoing issue. We're not gonna have less people. We're gonna have more people in western Montana. And yeah, folks need to just go slowly and get there safely. So keep it in mind. Thanks.
Thanks for that message. Absolutely. Counselor Farmer?
Thanks. I'll just echo a lot of your comments about fire season and thank you to the fire department for their swift response and just remind folks that we are still very much in fire season. September has historically continued to see a rise in fires. And double whammy is that we also lose a lot of firefighters either to school because they're going to school or they are actually teachers themselves. So just be mindful over the holiday weekend to make sure you're following all the rules, making sure your chains aren't dragging. You don't want to be that person starting a whole fire outside Brett's RV. And then I also just want to say thank you to my colleagues for tonight's vote. I think that was a really important vote and I'm extremely excited to see those signs up in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Congratulations. Counselor Carlino?
I can pass.
Okay. Counselor Nugent?
Thanks. I will just echo the conversation around the schools and just remind everyone, school's starting this week. So please be on the lookout in all our neighborhoods around all our schools for kids coming to and from school and maybe not paying attention. So I think that's our responsibility to do that for them on their behalf. So that's all.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Counselor Savage?
I just echo the same thing. School starts on Wednesday for kindergarten, sixth and ninth grades and on Thursday for everyone else. And yeah, just be aware, be aware of bikes, kids on bikes, little people on bikes, people crossing the streets. We have schools on, you know, busy streets here in Missoula, Reserve Street, South Avenue, Phillips, all those places. So yeah, just remembering to drive safely. And I do want to say again to city staff how much I do appreciate the roundabout on Phillips. I think, I think a lot of people may not realize that Phillips has a cut through for the North Side to get to North Reserve Street and that's part of why it's so busy. And it is just really nice to think about not having to sit there forever and ever, back to all the way up to Shakespeare trying to get a left over the Scott Street Bridge, but also because it will be safer, it'll be safer for the neighborhood. So thank you. And I think it's hilarious, Ms. Basika, that you read that out because I grew up in the South and we do still abide by the no white below the waist after Labor Day rule. And my kids ask me every single Easter, can we do it yet? Can we do it? And I'm like, yes, you can. Now we're white below the waist. Weird old southern rules. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Counselor Basara?
Thank you. In the West Side, we used to call Phillips the West Side Highway. Maybe it's still known that way. So I am very happy to see these measures go into place and provide a safer environment for, for kids. And I agree, it's, uh, school starts on Wednesday and lots of eager, you know, little people trying to make it to school. So let's all pay more attention when, when driving. I also want to express my gratitude to everyone who made the Bluebird Extension possible to Republic Services, Five Valleys, and also the Snowball, the Morris family for partnering with the city to provide a place where we can park and explore that area. I think a lot of people, when they go to Grand Creek, they see a lot of open spaces and hillsides and, but very little, actually only two places are where it's, it's open to the public and this is one of them. So I know a lot of people are very happy to see that expansion for a few months of the year. So yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. And Counselor Nelson?
I'll pass tonight, thanks.
Okay. Counselor Jordan?
Thank you. I also, I want to make sure to thank staff for all of their hard work as well. I know they just got an earful from city councilors about going against a recommendation. But I also really thank them for the hard work and know that their hearts are in the right place and they want Missoula to be safe. So big shout out to our staff for their hard work. I also wanted to just touch on, Sandy, I'm getting a little bit of you in my blood because it is actually National Road Victim Month, which is a, it's not a very advertised awareness month. It seems to be bigger in the UK, but it's a month that serves to honor, remember, individuals who have died or been injured due to road traffic accidents. So our changing the speed limit is timely and I am really proud of the work we did on the DIAS floor tonight to make that part of town safer for folks. So thanks.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Jordan. And online, Counselor Cheryl?
I think all my colleagues have said what I would say regarding the speed limit. So I think, I think beyond that, I'll pass.
Okay. Appreciate that very much. And with that, I don't believe we have any other council members online. Yeah, I would, we know, we know that actually since the pandemic nationwide, and this probably goes, I wouldn't be surprised if this was worldwide, that people drive faster and more aggressively. That is data that actually is, is out there. And so if we can all, we can all just take it a little bit easy. Give yourself five more minutes. We'd all be better off. All right. Well, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn our meeting at 8:45 p.m. Thank you very much.